City Council Finance Meeting to order at 6:45 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims.
Madam Chairwoman, I would move for the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $183,104.33 manual check in the amount of $180.26 payroll liabilities for April 13th, 2018 in the amount of $211,862.53 for a total of $395,147.12.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions?
I do not.
Nope.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. And do we have any other business?
We do not at this time.
Okay, I would just like to take a second and thank senior staff for all your guys' hard work on our budget so far. I know that it's something that you guys absolutely love doing every year and look forward to, and I know you guys like pin it on your calendars and you have smiley faces written around them, but it's very grueling and I know that you guys are at it every single day and so I know, I appreciate it and I know everybody else on council and stuff does, so thank you so very much for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Okay, then, meeting adjourned.
2018 Regular Council Meeting, the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Councilmember Bailey will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, Councilmember Larson will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to be here to work for the city of Riverton. Father bless us that we might have Thy guidance and direction, that we might do the best for this city. Father, we are thankful for all the blessings that we have, acknowledging Thy hand in all things and say this humbly, name Thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Would the City Clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Cody.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
Present, and I declare that we have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, the motion passes. Communications from the floor, citizens' comments, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Thank you. I'm Bill Merle, a resident of the big Wyoming subdivision, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Butterfield, Ms. Tolstad, and Mayor Baker for listening to me about the concerns I had about the upcoming roadwork in my subdivision. You guys went above and beyond explanations about what was going to occur and even gave me schematics of the curbing and all that, and I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We don't want, we hope none of these projects that we're doing, you know, make the things worse. Okay, thank you.
Wow.
All right.
Right.
Consent agenda. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, April 17th, 2018, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, May 1st, 2018, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for May 1st, 2018. Ordinance number 18-005 on second reading, and I'll read that by title only. An ordinance amending Title 16 subdivisions to revise Chapter 16.20 improvements. Section 16.20.030 required prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Ordinance numbers 18-006 on second reading. An ordinance pertaining to Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.32, Police Department, revising Sections 2.32.040, Special Police Officers, 2.32.060, Police Subject to Mayor's Orders, and repealing Section 2.32.110, Punishment of Policemen of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. And we also received an open container permit application for a wedding on June 29th, 2018 at Sunset Park from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Thank you. Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Recommendations from the Finance Committee for claims to be paid in the amount of $183,104.33 manual checks in the amount of $180.26 and payroll liabilities for 4/13 of 18 in the amount of $211,862.53 for a total of $395,147.12.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. It moved in second, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item is Public Hearing of Resolutions 1373, 1374, and 1375 Utility Rate Adjustments. Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The three resolutions coming before you in this public hearing allows us to increase, or for staff to propose, that the utility rates in the Water, Wastewater, and Sanitation Fund be increased pursuant to the Consumer Price Index. It has been about a year, almost to the day that we considered the utility rates. They were considered April 18th, 2017, and in accordance with our city code, the City Council shall review the rates and make a determination as to whether to increase or leave the same. Staff proposes that the rates increase for the CPI, that increase is a 2.4% increase, that is from the March 2017 to March 2018 period. As you saw in your packet, this increase will generate approximately $49,000 in revenue for the water fund. It will generate $44,000 for the wastewater fund, $54,000 for the sanitation fund. Staff will stand for any questions at this time regarding this proposal for a utility increase pursuant to the CPI.
Any questions? Your Honor, would move that we open a public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we open a public hearing. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and with other applicable laws, and I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Your Honor, seeing as nobody's come forward, I recommend that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It moved in second that we close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I now declare the public hearing to be closed. So, consideration of Resolution 1373 Water Rate Adjustments, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1373.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Your Honor, forward either Kyle or Tony. Do you have a, I know we've been working on our capital plan and we have multiple projects that are upcoming in water, sewer, and waste treatment. What is the outlook for our, you know, capital outlays over the next year or two?
I'll take care of it. Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Councilman, as we look forward and we start to implement our capital program, we're starting to get a better view of exactly how our capital looks. There are some significant projects, and we happen to be coming to what amounts to a perfect storm, and there's a number of projects going on. We'll see that through this year's budget. We have a relatively capital-strong budget simply because we have North Federal work, we have the lighting, a lot of those different items. The Riverton Water Supply Project is through here, so that's been pretty significant. This is a very good, this is a very positive step towards addressing that. However, we did speak at one point during our goal-setting session about looking at a rate study. That rate study is also going to incorporate capital expenditures, so we, so we will be looking towards rates that address those on a consistent basis. I hope that answers the question. Generally speaking, with our current, we have a lot of projects on the horizon.
Well, and I guess where I was going with that is, do you feel that 2.4% is enough to build us the additional reserves that we need to undertake these projects that we've got coming in the next year or two?
Your Honor, Councilman, at this point, I don't necessarily think that's going to be, at this point, I think it's the right step to take. However, of course, once we do the rate study, that's going to be when we have a really intelligent number to provide you and say, here's where we're sitting. So, do I think it's, it's the, it's the end answer? No, truthfully, I don't. However, but to tell you what that number would be right now would be to, I wouldn't have that information just yet, but we will find it for you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Consideration of Resolution 1374 Wastewater Rate Adjustments. Would the, Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1374. So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion on wastewater. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Consideration of Resolution 1375 Sanitation Rate Adjustments. Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1375.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded is your discussion on sanitation rates. Go ahead, Tim.
You are, I know this is something that we haven't really completely discussed or said that we are all about, but if there were a likelihood that we decided we wanted to get out of the sanitation business, I mean, would we want to wait until we do a rate review on this before we raise the rates here, or, I don't know, I'm just, I like the idea of increasing rates if we, if we know we're going to need it, which is, I think, where Councilman Bailey's question went directly to. If we're going to be, just having this money sit there and nothing done with it, I don't think it makes, makes sense to raise rates. And particularly in wastewater and water, we know we're using that, we know that we've got capital projects on the horizon that might be using that. I guess I'm just kind of thinking in terms of disposal and everything like that. If this is something that there might be consideration for this down the road this year, I just, I don't know if we necessarily need it, and I don't know to what extent we're really married to the idea of continuing to stay in the whole business of doing it. So, that's my only concern, and I don't know if you could address any of that, Mr. Tolstad, but.
Go ahead. Mayor and Council, thank you. If we are to examine the privatization of any such utility, that, that long, ongoing process, those that I've endeavored into and started down that path never having completed one, is, you get nine months, a year into it before you really have really good numbers or really any option of moving forward. As we look at the coming budget and the next year that we're going to be budgeting, I would suggest to you that this rate, you won't really know what you need to set rates at fully until the next year, but I would say that, until the rate study is complete. But I would say that based on, you know, current, the current budget outlook and the fact that we're going to have to continue to run this for at least another year, that the 2.4% is not out of line to stay with, based on the CPIU. So at this, at this point, I would say that it is appropriate. I don't feel it to be absorbing it, but my fear when we set rates and when we work on rates is that if we hold off wondering what we're, wondering if we're going to do something else, that when it actually comes down the road, that hit, that all at once hit while maybe the same amount of money long-term is still more significant to our ratepayers. So, that's, we're trying to be thoughtful that way and trying to plan ahead. We don't want to have to take larger chunks later in order to play catch-up.
So, in other words, when we increased the rates last year, which, like you said, was just right around the same time, perhaps if we had done this as a stepped increase year by year and been thinking about that every single year, maybe we wouldn't have had to increase it by so much at once, because we would have been putting a little bit into it at a time.
Councilman, yes, that would be part of it, and I think that, again, I hate to keep harkening back to the rate study that is planned and is budgeted for this year. That will help give us a much more complete, a complete long-term view, because it will take into account your capital, and here's where you need to be, and here's your historical operations, and we'll make certain assumptions, such as we expect the CPIU to increase a 3% every year on average over a five-year period. And then we can calculate that and we can understand those assumptions, and then as time goes on, we'll also have the opportunity to adjust. So, long answer, but.
And I guess I don't want anybody to think by my statements that we're even, that there's ever been any study or talking about privatization or anything. I'm just saying if that did happen, I wanted to have an idea of, would we be putting the cart before the horse? But I guess that makes sense. You're saying even if that were to happen down the road, we'd want to have the rate increase. So, thank you, Tony.
And I might suggest too that we have uncertainty in our future with regards to the old city dump off of Smith Road and Park, where even, even if the low-cost option becomes what DEQ thinks we should do, and that is to pump and treat, to, that would be an additional expense that we would have to operate basically in perpetuity. So, not only would there be a construction cost at the beginning of that as we install the wells and the, and the drainage system around that landfill, but then we would also have to run that equipment and pump to the wastewater treatment plant and process it. And so, we are probably not prepared to do that, and they might come back to us and say, no, we really think what you ought to do is dig it all up and truck it to lander. And if that's the case, then we're really not prepared to do that. So, so the fact that we have a few, you know, this is going to generate, what, $40,000?
Which will not pay for trucking.
They won't pay for the study to study the trucking. So, okay, so this is a, this is a real challenge that's, that I see ahead of us. So, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next, Ordinance 18004, third and final reading, Riverton Municipal Code Title 16 Revision Sidewalk Guidelines. Would the City Clerk please read Ordinance Number 18-004 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 18-004 on third and final reading. An ordinance amending Title 16 Subdivisions to revise Chapter 16.16 Design Standards. Section 16.16.050 Sidewalks of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 18-004 on third and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Cody.
Aye.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yeah, aye.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Aye.
Mayor John Baker.
I vote yes, and the motion passes. The next item is a fuel contract renewal. Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. In 2015, the city advertised for suppliers for our fuel. This fuel is for what we put into our traveling vehicles and also for our equipment that we operate. The contract was awarded to Bailey Enterprises. It's a two-year contract with two one-year optional renewal periods. We are about to enter the second one-year optional renewal period. Staff has spoken to Bailey Enterprises, and there's mutual interest from the city staff perspective and Bailey Enterprises to continue with the contract that is in place. So therefore, we ask City Council to renew the existing contract, exercise the last one-year optional renewal period, and allow us to continue as such. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Your Honor, I would abstain from voting. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of fuel contract renewal?
Your Honor, make a motion that we renew the last one-year extension with Bailey Enterprises for fuel.
Second.
It moved and seconded, discussion. Tim.
Mr. Butterfield, I guess just as, so I understand, then at the end of this one-year renewal period, then would it be advertised again just as we did the first time?
Your Honor, Councilman, that is correct.
Okay. That's all I had, Your Honor.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can I ask a disinterested third party that's not voting a question?
Go ahead.
You're silly.
Mike, what's the fuel going to do next year's?
If I had a crystal ball that worked that good, I would be on a beach with a margarita or something.
Fuel prices have been climbing lately. Price of crude's up, and so that just brings everything up with it, so I would expect in the short term that the prices are probably going to be climbing, so.
Tourist season.
And, yeah, traditionally, summertime, they climb, supply and demand gets shorter, and so. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Today, the mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Council Committee reports and Council Members Roundtable. So, Ms. Gibbon, have you got anything for us?
Just that I went to my meeting for Board of Directors for WHAM last Wednesday. We discussed different ways of revenue and different bills that are being passed, but the most important thing is we want to keep the WHAM organization going, and for those of you that don't know what WHAM is, it's Biome Association of Municipalities, and so they're wanting us to just really encourage that we all continue to go to WHAM, we continue to support it. It's really nice to be able to go and talk to our legislators, and when the budgeting session is there, and be able to have a voice for our communities, and so we just really need to keep supporting them. That's all.
Okay, Sean, have you got anything for us tonight?
Yeah, I had the opportunity last Friday to go to Cody with our Special Olympics team from Riverton. There was approximately about 20 athletes that went out there. Cody did an awesome job hosting all those athletes, and they, they all qualified to go to the area games, which is in Laramie towards the middle of May. So, and then we had the fundraiser dinner here in Riverton again, and just to speak out about our community, how no matter what's going on with our economy and everything like that, people still come together, and we raised pretty close to $15,000 to help support the Special Olympic athletes to go to compete, to pay for their travel, their food, their lodging and stuff like that. It's just another great example of this great community that we live in, and the way that people come together and help and support however they can. So, thank you to the community.
Okay, Kyle, you got anything for us?
No, sir, I don't.
Mr. Bailey?
I did not either.
Mr. Hancock?
Yes, this is not a committee report, but baseball season has started, and I was just noticing how, this is, kind of goes along with what Mr. Peterson was saying, how many people in the community step up. I regrettably do not have the time to be able to put into coaching my son's baseball team, and I'm so glad that there are people that do that, everybody that puts in the time for it. It's just amazing to me, and I appreciate all the volunteers that we have in this community. You make Riverton just a really great place to be, and so many different programs are possible because of all the volunteers, and so I just wanted to say thank you to them, especially with baseball, because that's very enjoyable. We have our first game tomorrow.
Good, thank you. Lance?
Your Honor, the first meeting of the Solutions Committee is tomorrow evening at 6:00. at 6 o'clock. Councilman Hancock and I and several other members of the community will be meeting for the first time to kind of kick off that effort, and hope to have some reports and a subsequent council meeting as to where we're headed and what we're up to, so, pretty excited about that, getting ready to get that going again.
Good. Thank you very much for your participation, both of you. Okay, city administrators report?
Thank you, your honor. Just a couple of smaller items, and then one of significance. The first is that there is a budget meeting with staff tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. If anybody is planning on attending, please let us know. I know I've heard from one, two, three, okay, right now I got four, so, we have time to notice? Okay, just checking. So, we will be having that, and then there'll be another one next Wednesday as well. That will, and it's going to be similar to the one tomorrow, but we'll have some more finalized numbers. The, I draw attention to Paul Morenci on our tree board. I've been informed that he is going to be finishing up his time on the tree board after approximately 10 years, and we wanted to say thank you to him for his service to our community. That's very much appreciated. We wish him best in all the things he's going to do now. There is a force meeting on the 15th, if anybody is interested in attending. The planning commission will have a meeting this Thursday at 5:30 p.m. There will be, we are still going through the parking ordinance. It was one of the first things that came up when I was here, when I first got here, and Eric's been working through that, and so we look forward to bringing that to you very soon. There's some changes we're making, so we look forward to talking with you about it. The item of significance that I would bring up to council is, in the little while before I got here, the city decided to go to a mobile app, and the mobile app that we currently have is, I think it's called My Riverton, and I've tried it out on our phone. We have a handful of users comparatively for it. At this point, looking at our budget and looking at the use of it, and honestly, the value of it and the annual expense of it, it would be our intent to move away from using it at this point, and to move away from that contract. Currently, it's $6,500 a year compared to certain website, complete city website support, that's about $4,000. So, it's a relatively significantly cost for what we're getting for it. People can pay their bills online right now. The current app directs you to our online bill pay anyway, so it's a passage through to that. So, we wouldn't be giving up that function. As we look forward to how we can be more efficient and use technology, we don't want to step away from technology, but we want to make sure at the same time, we're using the appropriate technology and we're getting the value for it. At this point, after discussion with staff and having fielded a number of comments, we do not feel that it is appropriate to move on with it. And if council had any comments or felt strongly, and otherwise, we wanted to bring it up.
When does the current contract, I assume there's a contract period, or is it month-to-month, or how?
The short version of it, there was a discrepancy in the contract, so as we looked at it and we dove into it, there isn't an executed contract, there's a scope of work. And so, after, why I'm bringing this to you now is that we have talked to them, and they've said, okay, if you're not happy with us, then just, we can, or sign the contract, and we continue and we pay. So, nothing has ceased in what has been paid or could have been paid, it is just right now, we're looking at moving forward, we have the opportunity to make that change.
You need that in the motion?
No.
Okay. It was not very user-friendly for me, so, I concur.
So, we will be terminating that pretty quickly here, so it will not be part of this next year's budget. That is all that I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you. You know, I don't, I don't have any, well, maybe I do have a comment, and it just, and it just ricochets off of what Tim said. He recognized how many people were involved in Little League and, you know, athletics in our community, and when I first came onto council, because I hadn't actually been involved in that very much, I didn't, I really didn't understand how many people in our community, you know, give of their time every day in order to make that work for their kids and other people's kids. And even though their kids like Lee Martinez, okay, I mean, he was down to great-grandkids, and was still, and was still out there doing his umpire thing, and contributing, because he just loved baseball, and he loved kids, and wanted to work with it and keep it going. And as you look around our community, there's a whole lot of stuff that goes on in our community. Newspaper reported the other, yesterday, that the tree planting that went on down on the rails-to-trails and Riverwalk, and so, just what I thought, you know, we're going to put 50 trees in the ground, and I'm thinking about 50 trees in a bucket, you know, air ruts, and what it really turned out was that they were already grown-up trees. So, Alan Moore wanted to make it different in a big way, and the tree board, you know, just really significantly stepped up and did that, and so there are a lot of people in our community that every day are working on things that try to make Riverton a great place to live. So, I appreciate that. So, I think we're done for the evening, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right here at 7:30.